They won't let me sell peanuts and sodas.
You got those?
No, no.
You get those filled out with just. I'm gonna call this study session to order. Victor will not be here tonight. Shelley is on her way. She had an issue with her.
Yes.
Car keys. She's on her way, so we will go ahead and get started. Would you please stand for the invocation Reverend? Pastor Adrian Taylor is gonna do that for us tonight. Hello, Adrian. How are you?
Hello, Mr. Mayor. Good to see you today, members of council. Could all bow our heads, please. Gracious Father, we thank you. We are so grateful for the privilege to come together before you. We ask blessings upon this great council and this meeting and all that are gathered today. We ask you, Father, to guide our steps. As the scriptures tell us, to commit our plans for you. And you will, Lord, establish them and order our steps. So we thank you right now for your blessing upon all of us, over our families, our community. We thank you, Father, for peace, and we trust you for it now in Christ Jesus' name, we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Would you all please join in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. During our study session this evening, before we get into our regular session, we have a couple of presentations. The first will be on Missouri's bicentennial in 2021, and Michael Sweeney from the Missouri Historical Association is gonna do that for us. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor, Council, thank you again for the opportunity to speak with you. Yes, I am Michael Sweeney. I am the bicentennial coordinator for the State Historical Society of Missouri. For those of you who are unfamiliar with our organization, we're headquartered in Columbia, Missouri, founded in 1898 by the Missouri Press Association, and we collect, preserve, and provide access to resources dealing with Missouri and Missourians. For those of you who are not in the know, we have an office here in Cape Girardeau, down on the SEMO campus. It is one of our six research centers. Dr. Bill Edelman, formerly of SEMO, is in charge of that research center. But I'm here today to talk to you about the Missouri bicentennial. And I've been on a grand seed planting tour for about a year. I had a great conversation with Julia and Brenda several months ago about some of the work we're doing, and I'm here to tell you a little bit about where those things stand. So by way of introduction, in 2013, the Missouri General Assembly asked the State Historical Society of Missouri to start coming up with ideas, plans, and whatnot for the bicentennial, to be in 2021. The society held focus group meetings around the state in 2014 and 2015, certainly here in Cape Girardeau, but also up in Hannibal and St. Joe, and around and about to see what people were interested in. Came up with a preliminary set of projects and programs. My job for a little over a year now has been to travel around the state, visit with darn near, and visit with me about what we come up with, partly to get feedback, but more importantly, to build a network of people that when the time comes, we can make some things happen. Now, there's a few preliminaries you need to know about upfront. Preliminary number one, the big takeaway from the focus groups was that no one seemed all that interested in a statewide organization coming in and telling them how to do a bicentennial. What we heard is people wanted to think about local history, local traditions, local culture. I bring that up because it impacts why some of this looks the way it does. Preliminary number two, we are trying really hard to make this an actual statewide commemoration. Early on in my travels, I was down in Carruthersville, visiting with the public librarian down there. About halfway through my spiel, she stopped and says, "Listen, y'all do these statewide things, and you forget we're down here." And she's right. Things tend to happen along the I-70 corridor, so St. Louis, Kansas City, and then maybe just city Columbia. The question for us is, what does something that's truly statewide even look like? Preliminary number three, State Historical Society, love it as I do, we're a pretty academic-y bunch. We tend to work with other historical societies and colleges and universities. But in this instance, we've opened the door really widely, right? So I have a meeting with arts councils, with chambers of commerce, with tourism offices, with local and county government, with Rotary Clubs, community betterment groups, public libraries. Again, darn near anyone who is willing to visit with me, with a desire to get as many people involved as possible. The last thing I want to mention before I launch into all of this, and it's probably the most important piece. As much as we're a history-based organization, we're kind of always looking to the past. In many ways, the bicentennial is not about Missouri's past, it's about Missouri's future. And why this is still a place you want to call home, and a place you want to invest, and a place you want to keep vibrant. In many ways, that's kind of what the moment offers. So all this came together in the mission statement we came up with for what we're calling Missouri 2021, and that's this. We think bicentennial provides this opportunity to promote a better understanding of Missouri's communities, counties, and regions, people past and present. Hopefully, this idea of building some sense of shared investment in this state's future. I am not so silly as to think at the end of this, that you come to some sense of one Missouri. But I hope you know your neighbors a lot better. I'm now 95 counties into this expedition. And Missouri's communities are doing awesome things. I don't think we often think about that. I mean, for lack of a better term, we're a fairly fragmented state, even beyond a certain, some urban-rural divide. I mean, history and geography is kind of dividing the state up into sections. We all tend to sort of stick to our areas. I'm hoping if anything comes out of this, that it's an opportunity, like I said, to get to know each other better, and take it a greater appreciation of that and see the great wealth, just as human beings that we are to this state. To help make this thing go, in January of 2018, a group of other statewide nonprofit organizations and government agencies came together and formed a bicentennial alliance. And the alliance is not a governing body, but more a public statement that, hey, we want this thing to go well, and we're here to help support one another. So all of these entities here, and they're players you would think about, right? Missouri Arts Council, Missouri Humanities Council, MU Extension, State Archives, State Library. All these folks have all dedicated themselves to developing programming and projects that can be statewide and happen in 2020, 2021. We hope this continues to grow over the next several years. Also, it's important to note that in October of this year, Governor Parsons signed into being a bicentennial commission. None of those members have been selected yet, but I'm hoping that will happen soon, that's worth the end of 2018. But I think that will also, I think, help provide some coherence to this commemoration. So that's sort of the overarching piece of this. And I should also mention, we have developed a website, Missouri2021.org, which is your gateway to all things bicentennial, whether it's stuff the State Historical Society or stuff that other people are doing. We've kind of used the website as kind of this way to fulfill our coordinating role, and that's largely how the State Historical Society sees itself. As a group that can help coordinate these various things happening across the state. So we've developed a three-legged stool. Leg number one would be community engagement projects, right? What are some things we can all work on together and hopefully all benefit from together? Leg number two would be local and regional commemorations, right? What might you do in your own backyard to think about the moment and the bicentennial moment? And finally, other statewide opportunities for thinking about the life, history, and culture of the state. So that's kind of how this is structured. Community engagement projects, we're actually trying to get all of these, we're all getting these going here this year in 2018. We're working on a new online Missouri encyclopedia. Lots of states have done this, lots of municipalities have done this, so we're doing one. I'm sure everyone is familiar with Wikipedia, right? This is not Wikipedia. The desire is to build an authoritative, well-researched guide to Missouri history, life, and culture. We publish a journal four times a year called Missouri Historical Review. We have since 1906. It's our scholarly journal. And that editorial team is overseeing this project, right, and working on the big topics, right? Harry Truman, right, very compromised, the Sippy River. My job, particularly in 2019, is to visit with communities and ask the question, what will make this thing look complete to you? Right? Who are the people, places, events, and things that shape your community, shape your county, shape your region? Frankly, because what we think they are, not always what they are. And I'll use my friend down in Carruthersville as an example, right? So Theresa, what would you pick for the encyclopedia? Without skipping a beat, she was like, ah, the 2006 tornado that came through our community ripped up our major institutions and changed the way we interact with each other as a community. For them, it was a community-defining event. I wouldn't pick that one. She did. We're over in Joplin, right, we visited the Joplin History Museum, and we inevitably talked about the Civil War. And, you know, like, we had all these scrimmages down there that no one ever talks about. I mean, we know about them, but no one else really knows about them. One last example, I didn't know this until I started this job about the large Vietnamese population in Carthage, Missouri, dating from the Vietnam War. It was a refugee community. If I asked them, who are the people, places, and events that shaped your community? They'd give a really fascinating answers, right? So part of us trying to come up with what are those topics, and part of us trying to find people who are willing to write on them. And the editorial team has set this up, so there's sort of large articles for things of national significance and medium-sized articles for things of statewide significance. But the local and regional topics, they're looking at between 250 and 1,000 words, which frankly, is not a tall order. It's actually a really doable thing, I think, to build an amazing discovery tool that I've used long past the bicentennial. So this is an ongoing project of ours. We're, of course, doing a photograph project, really aimed at capturing distinctiveness of place across the state. Where I mentioned, it's kind of a state of great cultural and geographic diversity, and we're looking for people who are willing to capture that. In 2018 and 2019, right, so it's a snapshot pretty much of our moment. Professionals, amateurs. The idea is ultimately to come to 200 images by the beginning of 2020, that we're a tour around the state for two years. I'll keep coming back to this 2020, 2021 thing, because we want, these things we're all working on together, we all want to be able to enjoy together. So this is a project of ours that, the due date for those photographs is November 1st, 2019, so we're slowly getting photographs in now. We're doing a bicentennial quilt. Man, I knew quilting was big in this state, but I did not truly, honestly understand until I got out and about. We have partnered with Missouri Start Quilt Company up in Hamilton, Missouri, and they have agreed to donate the labor to assemble the quilt and the materials to put the quilt together. So what we're working to do is get a block from every county that shows some feature of that county, some landscape, some event, some person. The idea is, again, to have this thing together by the beginning of 2020, and then tour it around the state for two years, hopefully with other local quilts, either new works from quilting guilds or historical ones, to just show off the art of quilting in the state. Missouri community legacies, I have to admit, this is kind of a pet project of mine, and actually, it's also kind of our bicentennial time capsule piece. Only we're not gonna stick anything in the ground. So we're looking to people to document local traditions, meaningful places, and organizations and institutions. When I say document, we're looking to people who write kind of a three-to-five-page paper. You know, this is the tradition, this is a little bit of its history, this is why it's important. Five to 10 photographs, and then other supplemental materials. And as I said, sort of along three lines, so local traditions, meaningful places, organizations, and institutions. One of our early examples I set up was for our Juneteenth celebration in Kansas City. Juneteenth celebrates June 19th, 1865, the day the last group of slaves in Galveston, Texas finally heard about the Emancipation Proclamation. We've had our Juneteenth Festival in Kansas City since 1980. So we did a short little paper on kind of, this is kind of what our festival is, and this is how it came together and why it came together. I did a little interview with the organizers about, how did you get involved in this, and what would you like to see in the next five years? Rather, some programs and photographs, and that's kind of our little snapshot of that particular tradition. Give you another example, when I was up in Bethany, they were telling me all about Bill Hogan's Fourth of July parade. Bill Hogan was this World War II vet, and in the early 90s, Bethany did not have a Fourth of July parade. Bill decided he just could not stand, decorated up his Jeep, got his buddies, they went around the Courthouse Square and down to the park, and that was the first parade. Now, it is the biggest event of the year in Bethany, right? There are more people in this parade than there are watching this parade. And when I visited with that chamber, I was, you know, I said, actually, the Chamber of Commerce, I said, well, how does this work? And they're like, well, there's only two rules. Rule number one, don't sign up, line up. And rule number two is horses at the back. That is how this works. Right? It could also be a food tradition. Marceline, Missouri, they wouldn't let me leave town, so I had a Dusty Miller. Dusty Miller's this little ice cream treat, and the story they told me is the lady who ran the confectionery 100 years ago, Mrs. Miller. Her husband works in the coal mines, and one afternoon, he busts on the door and says, honey, I can't get it out of my head, I want the ice cream you do and the fudge, because you put molten wood balls through the whole thing. She's like, fine, whatever. Dusty Miller, get out of here. Coal dust coming off of him, hence how it got its name. But it could also be, you know, I said, a meaningful place, and a meaningful place is maybe a park, or a cemetery, or a building, or a main street. As I wrote the guidelines, I asked the question, like, where do you take a date in your town, right? That's a meaningful place. And then the last one is sort of organizations and institutions. So what does the year in the life of your church look like? Or year in the life of your Rotary Club, your Lions Club, or really any of these organizations that sustain community well-being? The idea is to build two files, one that would stay local, with your local library or historical society, and then one that would come to the State Historical Society, right? And on their own, these things may seem really insignificant. But I think when you start looking at them together, right, and kind of fully have similarities and distinctions, they can be an amazing record of Missouri sort of at this moment. In fact, all four of these things I have just mentioned do the same darn thing. They're asking communities to think about, you know, what are the stories we tell about ourselves? And how do we see ourselves in relationship to each other? How do we see ourselves in relationship to the rest of the state? What we're hoping to provide as an organization is to find ways to put these things into conversation and try and share them a little more widely. One last community engagement project to want to mention, Missouri Humanities Council, one of our bicentennial alliance partners, is doing a bicentennial penny drive, collecting pennies, nickels, and dimes from school kids. I'll be honest, I was not sure kids still carry pennies, nickels, and dimes. It appears they do. And they're gonna use those funds to help conserve the state's founding documents. So they're working with Missouri State Archives and the State Historical Society on this project. Right? But all these things, things we can work on together and hopefully all benefit from together, so that's leg number one. Leg number two would be local and regional commemorations. We've developed an endorsement program where you can apply for Missouri 2021 endorsement for your project, your program, your event. We let you use the logos and advertise what you're doing on the website and social media. The main criteria is that it fits the mission of Missouri 2021, which, as you'll recall, is to promote a better understanding of Missouri's communities, counties, and regions. We kept it really wide open, right? And we did that, because we didn't want lack of resources to be a barrier to participation. Because, right, the starting place for most people is no time, no money, and no labor. That's where most people start. So our thought initially was, you could take what you were already doing and maybe give it a bicentennial spin, right? So it was in Stockton, visiting with the mayor of Stockton, we talked about the Walnut Festival. They've been doing the Walnut Festival for 60-plus years. They are doing one in 2021, whether this is happening or not. That year, it's like, that year will theme into the bicentennial, the mayor said, and we'll maybe do a special exhibit on Cedar County history in our city hall. Wonderful. I also tell people, you may not be interested in anything I'm shelling out, do your own thing. Also fantastic. For example, Jackson County Historical Society, they recently got a donation of photographs they have picked as their project. They're gonna scan, catalog, and get online the most historically significant items by 2021. Was up in Moberly, visiting with Randolph County Historical Society, the Moberly Chamber of Commerce, and the city manager. And we were standing in front of this mural they did 50 years ago, like, the history of Moberly? Like, for our project, we're gonna do the last 50 years of this mural. It's a great project. And, right, what was amazing is, as we were standing there, you know, these folks here, the history folks, and then the people who are present-day economic developers in the area, and they were like, you know, we've always defined ourselves as a railroad town. And the railroad still goes through Moberly? It doesn't stop in Moberly anymore. And they're like, if that's not who we are, well, who are we? And how can we use this occasion to think through some of that? In fact, that's the thing I would tell you, is if there's a way to use this occasion to advance a project, to promote your community, do it! That's kind of what it's here for. It's supposed to be that impetus to push you a little bit further down the road. What we're hoping to do as an organization is, again, finally, is to share those things a little more widely. By the first quarter of 2019, we're gonna have a master calendar, sort of shows all the events that are going on across the state, but also a big map, so you can kind of look at the various projects that are happening. One quick thing I want to mention, I did not anticipate, but should have anticipated, that some larger statewide things would happen. This was sort of geared towards local and regional commemorations. But as I said, some bigger state things are coming together. I had a great conversation with the post-art librarian down in Joplin, Missouri, five months ago. We were talking about how there's so many great working artists in this state whose work does not much get seen beyond its own locale. Like, there's gotta be a way to get this stuff around. So we partnered with Brett Knapp over in St. Joe at the Ball Brett Kemper Museum, Michael Gaines at the Hannibal Arts Council, and then your own Sarah Stevens here at the Southeast Missouri Arts Council. Each of these individuals, Jill Sullivan there at the Post Art Library, and the other three are all gonna curate 15 pieces of local art from their region. And over the course of 2021, that show's gonna move to each of those four locations. In fact, it's gonna have its premiere here in Cape Girardeau in April, May? We're still working on the calendar. I think it's an exciting opportunity. This was Cape Girardeau, I thought I should mention it. But I think there's lots of other things that are certainly starting to come together like that. If you go to the website, you know, you'll see right now, we do profiles of some of the projects that we have already endorsed. The main point of this is to push people back to your own organization there, so you can look at that. Last category would be other statewide opportunities for thinking about the life, history, and culture of the state. Some of these fully in motion, some still just a glimmer in my eye. You may have started seeing the bicentennial license plate. It started being issued October 15th. Will be issued for the next five to 10 years. The Struggle for Statehood exhibit is a project of Missouri Humanities Council. They're doing an exhibit on the Missouri crisis, covering 1818 to 1821. It'll tour around the state, very similar to their World War I exhibit. Four Years to Statehood is a set of new lesson plans developed by Missouri Council for history education, free and available on their website for third-to-fifth graders. The Missouri Crisis at 200, this is a project of the Kinder Institute for Constitutional Democracy over at MU. They're doing a big conference on new scholarship and the statehood struggle, leading to a publication. They are also live tweeting the Missouri crisis on a daily basis, up until 2021. I must admit, some days are more exciting than others. But on the whole, it is kind of fun to watch this thing kind of unfold in real time. A few others are still in motion. We are working with State Library to maybe do a statewide reading program in 2021 that may happen here in this community, where the whole community reads the same book. We're gonna try and do something on a statewide level, maybe with a couple of books for children, a couple of books for teens, and a couple of books for adults. We've talked about some virtual exhibits. State Archives is gonna do a virtual exhibit of government documents, 200 documents for 200 years. I was dead-set on trying to do like a music festival, right? Talk about a state of great musical traditions. Those are bluegrass, ragtime blues, jazz, or fiddle tradition. Problem with the music festivals, right, it happens in one place and everybody has to go to the place. So someone said, well, you've got Speakers Bureau, so why not a Musicians Bureau, right? If I can find someone to demonstrate a tradition, who can talk about its significance and history a little bit, I can get that far further out into the state than I can a music fest. So we're playing with this idea. The last one I do want to make sure I mention is this passport or badge book. Again, I'm 95 counties into this thing. I have met the coolest people. I have seen the needed stuff, and frankly, I think everyone should do it. So we are working on trying to develop some sort of passport program that would be statewide. We'll probably start life as an app, but then have a paper corollary to it. Include, of course, parks and historic sites, but also wineries and farms and art galleries and libraries and festivals. Our goal is to get people out and about, seeing some of this state. I am not so silly as to think anyone from Carruthersville is gonna run up to Rock Corner, vice versa. But if you get out just a little bit farther, a little bit further outside your comfort zone, that's a positive. So we are starting to try and work with app developers to see what this might look like. But I think it's an exciting idea. We might set up challenges, right? We were thinking, well, find like, an organization to sponsor a challenge, like with the Route 66 Association, sponsor a challenge where you hit 10 spots and they'll pony up for your Route 66 button or sticker patch. I keep thinking Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts, right, or my Route 66 badge. Missouri Grape and Wine Board already has grape trails. Would they sponsor a challenge where you complete the trails and earn your sommelier badge? Local chambers have expressed an interest. I was up in Chillicothe, like, we'd love to do this. Yes, we will come up with five to 10 spots, send people our way, and we'll pony up for whatever prize might be. All ideas that are sort of in various states of motion. Before I wrap up, because I have, oh, I want to show one more. Everybody familiar with National History Day? For the most part. For those of you who are not, it is like a science fair for history geeks like me. Every year, a theme is picked. This year's is Triumph and Tragedy in History. And it's for middle schoolers and high schoolers, and you're encouraged to think out that topic. If you're, you know, old-fashioned like me, you write a paper, but you can also do a website, do an exhibit, do a documentary, do a play, anything that sort of engages in that. We're wanting to get students to think about Missouri topics, so we designed the Show Me Award. As a statewide sponsor of National History Day, on that statewide level, we're offering these prizes out to students who are working on Missouri topics. As again, I've talked nonstop at a rapid pace now for about 20 minutes. I appreciate your time immensely. Before I wrap up, right now, you are looking at the single solitary human being fully dedicated to this task. I'm hoping that will change with a bicentennial commission. We'll get a few more things moving. But as you can imagine, staying in contact with people is by far the hardest piece of this. There are 114 counties and the independent city of St. Louis. There's one of me. I mentioned the website. On the website, we have an email thing you can sign up for to keep you in contact. I am also on Facebook and Instagram. I did not have these before I started this job. My wife was very excited to see me pulled into the 21st century. I bring that up just to say that I'm getting better at it, so please, stick around. That's my presentation. I hope this has been interesting. And I really am pleased to let me spend a little time with you. I have also met with Charlotte over at the Cape River Heritage Museum. I mentioned I visited with Sarah Stevens. I'm meeting with Cape Girardeau Public Library, just to give you a sense of who else I am visiting with. I look forward to, you know, hopefully talking with you about this further down the road. I'm also happy to take questions if you have any.
Lot to do.
There's a lot to do, but man, I am blessed beyond measure. I always said, I am getting to see amazing counties and, you know, communities throughout the state. Once-in-a-lifetime opportunity, so no, a lot of work, but I feel awfully blessed to be here.
I'm glad you're doing it, because your enthusiasm is sure there.
You're very kind, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate that. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Now, I think we have a Chamber of Commerce Convention and Visitor Bureau and Magnet annual report. John and Brenda. Welcome.
I can guarantee you one thing right off the bat. I have never followed a more enthusiastic person about what they're doing as long as I've been coming here. So that was a, that was a joy to watch his, his passion and commitment, so. A couple of things, as you pass those down, Mark already has one, and Nicolette, make sure that you grab one too. There should be an extra one there at the end. First, Mayor Council, Mr. Meyer, city staff, appreciate the opportunity to be here. I'm gonna do a brief overview update of Magnet in calendar 2018 so far, and then Brenda's gonna do a little update on CBB with where we are at this particular point. It's an interesting year. I'm not gonna read all of this to you, but there are some things I want to highlight. First, just as a brief review, the Magnet organization does the economic development work for Cape Girardeau County, North Scott County. We venture into Southern Perry and Little Bullinger as well, funded by five entities, as a review. The cities of Cape, Jackson, and Scott, Cape Girardeau County, and Cape Girardeau Area Chamber of Commerce are the funding entities to Magnet, and all are back and fully functional and fully engaged. Scott City has rejoined us after they've gone through some of the stuff that they've gone through in the last year and a half or so, and are active partners again. What you have in front of you are just some highlights from some different categories that, that I want you to, to take a look at. I'm going to hit a couple of them, and then certainly we'll answer any questions you may have about specifics. So I'm going to start at the beginning where we talk about project activity overview. One of the things we did a couple of years ago is we only list our active projects as truly being active projects. In the world of economic development, lots of times, if there's a sniff or an inquiry, somebody puts them on a list. We wait until we've at least had some type of contact. We're working with them in some way, shape, or form, or we've had some interaction. So you see there what the numbers look like so far in 2018. The only thing I'd really probably like to point out in this, and not, not a great thing to point out, but you see the area that says two to three projects lost to other communities. There were two manufacturing prospects that we had, and Mayor and Mr. Guard, you guys know this, two manufacturing prospects that we had in the pipeline that went away when the state of Missouri voted right to work down. So not up here to make political comments or comments about anything other than to say that is a fact. And those opportunities are reduced when you're not in a right to work state. It is what it is. If you go down to the select economic development successes, you can look at some of the things that have just happened in 2018. I will tell you that many of these are not announced projects. We've talked many times about how a lot of our local companies choose not to announce when they're expanding. For some of them, it's because they're publicly traded, and they don't like that as, as people following what they're doing. For others, it's just not to draw attention to themselves for whatever business reason they may have. Mark has been very good with working with us on projects that are and aren't announced. But as, as a funding entity of, of this organization, it's important for you to know some of the successes. Am I going to tell you we are responsible for all of these? No. Will I tell you that we've had a hand in each of these in some way, shape, or form? Yes, some a lot more than one hand as it's, as it's going on. Data benchmarks is something we all need to take a look at right now. And that top one is incredible. So right now, Cape Girardeau County's unemployment rate as of October 2018 is 1.9%. Scott County sits at 2.4%. Perry County sits at 1.7%. In pulling some comparisons, Boone County, I think, is 1.8. That's Columbia. Osage County, close to Lake of the Ozarks, about 1.5. Mayor, you asked today about largest in the, at least in the state or in the area. We have, I think, New Madrid and Pembus Scott are our two highest unemployment. Neither is over 4%.
What do they consider full employment? What?
3.8 to 4.2, most economists will tell you is, is full employment. That number, I mean, that may change at this point. The other thing I want to say about unemployment is I understand that there's a lot of people that say it's not a real number. It's not true. It doesn't include this group or that group. I get all of that and would probably have a real good discussion with anybody. The one thing it is true is the way it's measured and used as a comparison. So if you just look at the way that it's measured over time and use it as a comparison, it's, it's not hard for us to, us to understand that we're in a very unique situation unlike we've been in a long, long time in this area. The second number down there is important, too. Merrick tells us that there are 40,925 people in the labor force in Cape County, and 40,135 of them are working. So that's really just another way of stating what the unemployment rate is. So if you take that and flip it over to the back page and look at our business retention and expansion efforts, you'll hear us talk about BRE all the time. This is what we do with existing companies to measure ways we can make them more successful, remove impediments, or do what we can to help. Key findings, I just want to call your attention to that, not a surprise. What we hear from everybody is they need people. They need workers. And this can be chemists, this can be welders, this can be hospitality workers, restaurant workers, motel workers, city employees, CDL drivers. It's all over the board, all over the board. Infrastructure advocacy, you can see some of the major things accomplished this year. We were supportive of Ameren's efforts. They finally did get their project and, and effort through the legislature this year and got it acted upon. Workforce development highlights, needless to say, with what we're facing from a shortage of workers, we are focusing on this and will focus even more on this moving forward. We did host our third manufacturing day with seven local companies participating with more than 250 high school students to show them what's available in this area. Our AAA, if you will, is our graduating high school seniors in this area. That's a, a group that we can draw from, at least those that are not going on to four-year institutions. And then down under the other significant happenings, I would tell you that we continue to do a leader's lunch on a monthly basis, which is extremely good. It's just casual conversation and ability to, to visit on some things that may be facing cities. And then I also wanted you to know that the staff of our organization sits on the board of directors of at least seven statewide economic development related organizations. So the group you have working for you every day is recognized throughout the state of, in leadership positions. So it's not just here. We're plugged in every place. I'd be happy to answer specific questions that I can, or, or give you some input, follow up rumors, dispel rumors. I'll do the best I can.
John, you and I have talked on a personal level in Magnet. Can you kind of discuss with, so that the rest of the council, when it comes to workers, where do you find our blind spots to be and where are our deficiencies? Can you just touch upon that, just a touch?
Well, I guess the, if there's a, an upside to what's going on, it's that every desirable, livable location is facing the same thing. So we're all, we're all in a situation now where the people that want to work and know how to do it are finding their way into jobs. You know, I think we have to make sure, we're working on an idea right now. And I'll talk about this a little bit without giving away too much. So the State Department of Economic Development in the last eight months, 10 months, has been working on simultaneous projects. And most of you have either read something or heard something about it. One is a redesign or redevelopment of the Department of Economic Development called Best in the Midwest. And then they're also looking at workforce, and they're called That Talent for Tomorrow. So these have been running parallel. The recommendations of that will come out very soon. In fact, they're going to visit Cape on December the 14th and do a presentation to our board, and then they're going to, going to do some other things later on. And that's, that's both Zora from Higher Ed and Rob from Department of Economic Development. But in going through that, we are going to look at something that actually Dr. Vargas came up with, which is a, a just-in-time training situation. We're going to take a look at, just like just-in-time inventory or just-in-time manufacturing. We're going to look at assembling the players locally. And, and this is not in a paper form yet. And I'll, Mark, I'll talk to you afterwards a little bit, but this is not in a paper form yet. But it is something we want to talk to Rob and Zora about when they're here. We think we have the players locally that can really address a constant assessment of what our biggest needs are locally and really have it be rotating. I mean, we're not going to go into it saying, we are only going to do this, or this is what we're going to do. We're, we're going to say, we're going to continue, we know where we are right now. We're going to continue to assess what those top needs are, and then use this just-in-time training process and partners to deliver on those needs as quickly as we can.
I just want to say to the rest of the council, I work with John on a daily, weekly basis just with anything that comes up related to employment. And these employment statistics are really startling because it is shared across the state of Missouri with every municipality has incredibly low unemployment rates right now. So actually, to make, the thing that the council needs to remember is that we need to continue to move forward to make Cape Girardeau a marketable, solid place that people want to actively relocate to and reside, reside in. And if that's 55-plus housing, if that's, you know, different types of, different types of event space, anything like that that we can do to make us as marketable as possible is something that we've always got to keep an eye on because we are now competing actively every single day with the St. Charles Counties, the, the Green Counties, the different places that are, are trying to take away our workforce. Because those people are actively recruiting away our workers, and we've got to make sure that we're working as a municipality to keep them here as best as possible.
To follow what he's going to say, and I know you're going to jump on it. Our, our, one of our major efforts through Magnet and Chamber next year is that exact thing. We're going to expand our people recruiting efforts focused on a region where we can be successful. You know, we lose sight sometimes that Cape Jackson Metro, and I always got to remind people, we are a metro now, okay? Smallest one in the state, but we are. Cape Jackson Metro is the big city to a lot of people in 100-mile radius. And we need to make sure that we more actively recruit folks from that area to bring them here. And it's definitely something that we're going to spend more resources and more time on. If you have not been to capeishome.com, that is our town attraction website. Please make sure that you visit that. Most of you that are on Facebook, which is not me, have probably seen the latest video that was released about Cape as a place to live. Excellent, excellent job. Will be the next featured video on that website. But we will absolutely be active in the people recruiting area. Sir?
I'm just out of curiosity, the numbers here on workers, 40,925? And then we mentioned need for work. Do we know what that gap is on a, you know, I, I know you don't know exactly the number, but just kind of a...
If you, if you look at that, I think you're probably looking at, if you're looking at a 4% being normally what we are, and we're right at about 2% now, so you got every 1% is another 400. So we're probably 1,200-ish shy from open positions right now. So why that 700 can't fill those 1,200 open positions? You know, there's, there's probably a lot of different situations there. But, you know, it would probably be really nice to have 1,200 to 1,500 very employable people here tomorrow in many different sectors. Great question. What else?
Pretty well covered it.
All right, awesome. As always, if you have any questions about anything going on, and, and Councilwoman Kinder's done this several times. I appreciate when you call us and give us an opportunity to tell you what we're doing. We do a lot of stuff in a lot of different areas that a lot of people don't know. So if you're, if you're wondering what's happened in a certain area or a certain thing, please give us an opportunity to address that. At this point, I'm going to have Brenda come up. Brenda is doing a tremendous job at running our Convention and Visitors Bureau. Our last year fiscal numbers, I know you guys get these, but as a reminder, our hotels were up over 7.5%. Restaurants, restaurants up almost 2% for 3.77 overall. And so far this year, the combined numbers are just over 5% for the first four months. Those are the one set of numbers, and I know you guys judge us on, but I want Brenda to tell you the other things that are going on at CBB.
Good evening. And I did not bring coffee, so I will get mine to Nicolette, and if she could distribute copies to everyone, I appreciate that. That's a great lead in because, you know, there's people come in and visit. That also makes them move there. So if we give a good experience on the front end, then we can potentially have them come back and retire. The Convention and Visitors Bureau is going to be present at several events that will showcase on bringing people to Cape Girardeau for events and sporting. Alisa Ferris, who is the Director for Sales and Strategy, will be attending ABA Annual Meeting and Marketplace. She'll also go to Travel South Domestic Showcase, the Missouri Sports Tourism Exchange, and NASC Symposium, and the Connect Marketplace, and Teams Marketplace. Those are just several of the ones that will be attended through the, the year. And at the same time, at this time, we are actually bidding on the 2020 Missouri Sports Travel Exchange. It's being held in St. Charles this year. It's the first Missouri travel exchange done by our Missouri Division of Tourism. There are other major shows that come up throughout the year that we get on and go and attend. And these showcases allow us to, for her to meet one-on-one with individuals for four minutes and try to convince them to host their meeting here in Cape Girardeau or their sporting events. I will be attending also the Missouri Association of Convention and Visitors Bureaus and the Missouri Travel Council as a part of the board. I'm on boards on both of those boards. Capital Days of Tourism, Working Women Show, Missouri Group Travel Exchange, and the educational conferences. As Chairman of that conference, we actually, we actually design five conference, education conferences for our state attendees. The youth sports calendar, if you look at that on our website, it is full every weekend through November of next year. So, no, August of next year, there already, every weekend has a tournament going on. So that is no kudos out to our sports facilities for those things. The concept is going to be the spread to also, we also have a committee called the Tournament Committee that is a host that has the hotel representatives and has sports facility representatives. And we come together so that we can make sure that we collaborate and make sure our weekends and the experience that we can offer sporting groups is going to be a good one. Because nothing could be worse than having people come here and they have nowhere to stay. So we're, we're working together to make sure that we do that, and it's working very well. So what we're going to do next is we're going to start doing that with attractions. Our attractions also could benefit by coming together, the Red House, the Glen House, River Heritage. Get them all in a room together where they can talk, and we can try and come up with itineraries that will make it easier to have groups come and stay for longer periods by having those things pre-arranged. We have, for our riverfront, we have a new modern boat coming to town. In 2019, we have the American Harmony, which will be able to have 102 state rooms and 190 passengers. So that's a new boat that's coming to our riverfront, and it's called the American Harmony. And they call it a modern cruise ship, a modern riverboat. So, so that should be exciting to see when it first docks. The bow will open and they have a plank, the game plank comes out and will swirl either way they need it to go. So that should be interesting. And then in 2020, if, if Congress passes the Delta Queen, she will be back on the river. So we have some exciting things going on. As John mentioned, our tax is what we're measured by, the hotel motel tax. And as you all get and to give, are able to see, our previous years have been very strong. We also have research that is done by the Missouri Division of Tourism, and that shows that Cape Girardeau County, which is what we represent, has brought in $194 million in economic impact to this area and that we have created 4,400 jobs. So I think that's something that we can be proud of. And last thing I'd like to share is that I am so excited about is the USA Softball Missouri that they, the Shawnee Park was awarded and was selected as the 2018 Complex of the Year. That is just great news for us. I mean, that's something that we can advertise in magazines that you may not see locally, but they are shared across the USA and somewhere, sometimes abroad across the world. So like Connect Sports Magazine, you know, that will be in there and highlighted that we have a complex that is, you know, the best. And the only thing I can say is that Cape Girardeau Convention and Visitor Bureau's goal is to make sure that Cape Girardeau has an economic impact to the city of Cape Girardeau by bringing in more tourists and visitors to our area. Any questions?
Thank you. Mayor?
That's why I was just sitting back kind of thinking while both of those presentations were going on. And I think it's really, what hit me stark, I don't know, is that in the last couple of years, Magnet and, and the Convention and Visitors Bureau really has drilled down on looking at both of those subjects, economic development and the attraction of, of new, but they've, but they've taken it to another level, making sure that what we have is improved and coordinated. And I think that's really been a, a big part of the success in the last couple of years is how they've worked with existing businesses to make sure they have what they need to continue to grow, not just looking outside singly and saying, what can we attract? But doing that as well as a lot of other things. But that was, and the same thing has happened, I think, with CBB in that they've sat down with, with all the different people that work in sports and all the different people that are with the hotels and all the different, now the attractions, and then saying, how can we leverage what we already have? And I think that's a tremendous improvement in what we were doing. And I think it's really key to the future. So I wanted to compliment both, both those organizations and, and that progress and keep it up.
Thank you both. I will say that Julius here, Scott Williams, has put together a preliminary report of what happens in our city with parks and rec, with all the tournaments that go on through the summer and with the sportsplex. And they're also all-inclusive, and they're now including other, other things that happen in the city, other meetings and other things that happen. And they're recording how many people come in for those events, how many nights they stay here, what kind of economic impact that has. And I'm anxiously awaiting the completion of that whole thing so we can actually put all this together and see. all this together and see just what it means and how important that is. But we appreciate that, so. I know, I know they're working together to try to get it all compiled, and it's a, it's a big, big job, but I've seen the preliminary thing, but Scott said, that's not done yet, we're still working, we're still working. So I'm anxious. Along these lines, we're in Communications and Reports. We have been asked by MRCTI, which is the Missouri River Cities and Towns Initiative. It's a, it's an organization of mayors of cities and towns along the Mississippi River that encompass ten states. There are about a hundred and ten mayors that belong to this organization. We have been asked to host the September, the meeting in 2021 and celebrate our bicentennial at the same time we do this. It is generally, I know the bicentennial is officially August 10th. It's generally a September meeting. We can vary the dates a little bit depending on what, what other things on their calendar. But it is, it involves numerous Missouri cities, a lot in Southeast Missouri. All these cities along the river belong, not of them are, not all of them are actively involved in the organization. This may be a way to get some of these others. I know Carruthersville's actively involved, they were at the last meeting up in Iowa. But it really would be a good time to get all the cities in Missouri along the river involved and, and let them take part in our celebration in the state. It's, I think it's, we can create event that will showcase not only Cape Girardeau and Southeast Missouri and the area, but the state as a whole. And I, I think it's something that we ought to really consider, and I know it'll take a lot of help from Brenda and John, the business community, because we'll have to raise some money for this, but I think it's a really viable thing to make part of the bicentennial. So that's a good plan in my mind, unless somebody says otherwise. Before I go on, any other communication reports from council member?
I just want to chime up. I think everybody's pretty well aware, and I just wanted to say it here, CMO Football has, has, has done some pretty great stuff this, this fall, so I just wanted to bring that up and bring that to the attention of everybody. It's a great group of guys to look at, and I think that KFBS has profiled several of them in the Southeast Missouri, and so they just have really taken that program to a far, far reaches this, this semester. And so a lot of that goes back to Coach Duke. I think he's doing a great job with that program. Additionally, the last thing I wanted to talk about is that folks down at the Glen House will be hosting their candlelight tours starting on December the seventh, and they've invited the city council, but then that also kind of goes out to the rest of the community. So the Glen House is a local treasure, and I think we all need to, to support our local nonprofit organizations and historic homes. So that's a great opportunity. I've got some flyers up here if anybody needs them.
Thank you. It's December 7th, it's a Friday night, and December 15th is a Saturday night, I think. Anything else? If not, I'll, trying to think what's going on recently. I attended the Magnet meeting this week, a leadership meeting this morning, or this noon. We had an aquatics meeting last week, we have another one in, in the next Wednesday, at which time I, I do believe after looking at all the RFPs and whatnot, we can probably select, we've narrowed the sites to three, and at that time I think we'll probably be able to select the site for the new Aquatic Center. I will mention that December 11th, there will be a hearing here in the city council chambers about the Independence Traffic Study and the plans that have been put together to relieve congestion. Basically, Independence and King Highway, but it expands toward Carruthers and even toward the roundabout on the other end. It encompasses a real, real busy area where there's been expansion. The little Walmart there's made that a little more of an issue. All these has expanded. We've got a new, maybe two new people coming into the old Kmart building, which is gonna, you know, create more traffic. So it's, it's kind of a neat plan, and I think it would behoove the public to be here. I think all the businesses along there have been invited, so, and it is just a, a plan, it's not something that's written in stone yet, and that's why we're doing this, to kind of receive input from the businesses, because it does talk about maybe a future couple of new stoplights and some concrete barriers, and putting some more lanes in, and restricting some access at various places, maybe to right turn in and right in, right out. But they're looking at just how to alleviate congestion for the future as we look ahead to the next ten years. I can't think of anything else, Scott?
No, that's, the Independence, we actually have had a consultant looking at that and modeling what the different improvements look like. So you'll actually be able to see under the existing traffic, what, what movements and what, how the roadway backs up in existing, and what it will look like with the improvements. And we are, we do want to hear what you have to say, because there are some impacts to your ability to turn left in certain areas, and, and so I want to hear the public's input from all of that, so that we can begin to finalize the plan, and then be followed up with design and then construction. And Brenda took away my, my biggie on the sports complex, Shawnee Sports Complex is the complex of the year for the state of Missouri 2018, and that only happens because the voters voted to, to fund the fields and the, and the parking lots, but then our, our wonderful staff who, staff that make those tournaments run super smooth is the difference maker every time.
And now, now not only do we have a great sports complex there, we have the indoor complex, which has got tournaments, it's booked every weekend for I don't know how long. And there are plans with new PRS two to construct a new baseball complex, which will in turn attract more tournaments. So it's, it's an ongoing great problem to have, that we're gonna need more and more hotel rooms and more and more places for people to eat. So that's a, that's a good problem to have. Anything else? If not, are there any appearances this evening regarding items that are not on the agenda? Any appearances from anyone for any item that is not on the agenda? If not, we'll move on to regular session, I'll call that to order, and we'll have a roll call.
Are you going to do the agenda review?
Oh yeah, I guess we need to do that, don't we? We'll do that first.
All right. I was fine without it. We do have two public hearings tonight. First public hearing will be to construct and operate a telecommunications tower at 1157 Southwest Boulevard. There is currently a tower there. This is a, a extension of that special use permit and I think they're gonna build a little taller tower. The second public hearing is regarding a change in Chapter 30 regarding recreational vehicles. There's been some question about operation of recreational vehicles where people park them in certain places and live out of them. This designates that they can only do that in, in either a mobile home park or a RV park where it is designated for that purpose. It also defines recreational vehicles. So that's been through planning and zoning, and it will be the second public hearing tonight. These are items nine and 10 of the new ordinances. Under consent agenda, you have the second, third reading of the ordinance from the last time, the rezoning the top of road, the appropriation of funds from the bonds from the PRS two for the digital billboards, for administrative relief, exceptions for digital billboards, and for record plat at the Rhodes Mount Auburn subdivision that was made to accommodate MoDOT's entrance restrictions. Any questions or items you'd like to either remove or declare your confliction on?
Yeah, I hear none.
Okay, numbers nine and 10 were from the hearing. Number 11 is a, this is a item that was brought up previously by Alex when he talked with you about streamlining some of the things. This allows, instead of saying that we will only reciprocate on trade license with people that reciprocate with us, there are people, there are places out there that just don't reciprocate, but they do have a good process that is just like ours or similar enough to ours where we think it, it is an extra burden for people to have to go through our testing. This allows staff to look at that, make that determination, and then allow for reciprocity. I think that's a really common sense way of making things more streamlined for our citizens, and so we appreciate Alex bringing that forward. Number 12 is a drainage easement for the project you approved last time on the Arena Park Culvert Project. This is for a easement to do that work with the brags. Number 13 is a record plat, this is out at the Legends Development, a great developed corner there, lot, this carves that out, I think.
Divides it from one lot to two, does it not?
Yeah, so. Do you have any questions on that? And then number 14 is the delivery liquor license item. We've been talking about this is, as I noted to you, the most simple version at this time. We brought that forward after discussions and have brought forth just the basic, and it also is a fifty dollar driving license. It's, since it's a simpler license, as you, as you pull that out of what was covered before, deliveries were covered under distribution. By pulling that out, it's simply, we felt like fifty dollars more appropriate fee for that. And I believe that's all of the new ordinances. Any questions or comments regarding those?
Questions, comments?
The only question I had, and this was on the, on the change in the ordinance on recreational vehicles. Does staff have an opportunity to talk to police station or police force about enforcing on that? Because I can already, I think of some areas in town where I know some people are living in, like on a lot, living in an RV, and it's been there for years and years and years and years. And I just wonder about enforcement between staff and.
It was actually brought up at the public meetings. We have a police officer represented in that group, and it was actually drafted by that group.
Okay. Is one, I mean, and this isn't a knock, but it's, every now and then with that nuisance piece of it, I, I get complaints that, well, we've, we've passed the ordinance, but we have a hard time enforcing, or I don't, you know, so I just, you know, if we're gonna pass ordinances, I just want to make sure that they, it's, they're ordinances that can help the police and help the city to enforce the correct way, get things done, so.
I, I think this one in particular was, was a clarification because we have a hard time with the existing ordinance to enforce it.
Okay.
And so this clarification, I think, helps us enforce it. It's a great question, and it's always important. Nobody's to pass something, you can.
That's true. Can't afford it. Thank you, Alex.
And then we have appointments that got your input on previously, and Mayor will go over those when it comes time.
Okay.
That's all I have.
All right, good. Thank you. Now, Paul. We'll do the roll call.
Ryan Essex.
Here.
Bob Fox.
Here.
Robbie Guard.
Here.
Victor Gunn is absent. Stacy Kinder.
Here.
Shelley Moore.
Here.
Dan Preston.
Here.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Does that move?
Motion made by Mr. Guard, seconded by Stacy. Any discussion? Not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
It's approved. Public hearings. The first public hearing is to consider requests for a special use permit for purposes of constructing, maintaining, and operating a telecommunications tower at 1157 Southwest End Boulevard. Anybody here or not to speak about the public hearing? Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Russell Bean. I am with Selective Solutions. We are a telecommunications side acquisition company, and we represent Sprint this evening. Sprint is currently on an existing cell tower leased land from the city. It is a stealth-designed telecommunications tower that, that technology is outdated. You, you're gonna hear a lot in the coming months about 5G. This tower, the way that it's built, doesn't even support 3G. The, the new technology, I, I started in this industry in 1999, and I, I'm not gonna give you the whole rundown of how things have changed, but when I was first started, everyone's like, oh, this is gonna get smaller and smaller and smaller. And we were dealing with four-foot-tall antennas that were six inches wide, that would fit into a stealth canister. What they've discovered, and, and it used to be rich people, rich doctors on their, in their cars, were on their phones. Now everybody's on their phones, and everybody's doing everything on their phones. My kids can't even go in the car without going, Daddy, can I have your phone? Can you, can we use your hotspot? There's so much data and so much technology coming through these, these phones that the antennas, instead of getting smaller, have gotten larger. And what they've discovered is, you guys remember those giant buildings that used to sit at the bottom of these towers? All that equipment was connected to the antennas on top via coax cable. And what they've discovered is that the loss on this coax cable was so great that they moved all the antennas, they moved the radios up to the top of the tower. And the antennas have gotten wider because there, it used to be one carrier had the eight hundred megahertz band. Well, now there's been so many combinations that they have the eight hundred megahertz band, the twelve hundred megahertz band, the two dot five megahertz band. So these antennas are now supporting multiple frequencies as well. What Sprint would like to do in order to bring this tower up to be able to support the most current technology is they would like to replace the existing tower with what we're calling a semi-stealth tower. The antennas will still be concealed within a, a shroud, but it's not gonna look like that does now. It's not gonna look just like a flagpole. This thing's gonna be, gonna be wide at the top, but it's gonna support all the equipment up top. Councilman Preston, you talked about making the, the city more desirable for people to come in. What we're finding in, and I, I could bring you thirty studies that showed that the, the cities and areas with the most up-to-date technology are the ones that are attracting more people. This will bring this tower right up to be able to host the latest technology. This is gonna be where Sprint is gonna be able to utilize their 5G network when they come and flip it on. And, and the eastern side of Missouri is one of their first target locations for their 5G antennas. So it, it'll take up the exact same footprint. We're not gonna expand the footprint of the compound. It'll be built within the, the existing compound. They'll be utilizing the same footprint for their ground equipment, it's just that the tower's gonna be taller. I'm not gonna lie to you and say, oh, it's just gonna look just like the one that's up there. It's not. It's gonna be a little more visually noticeable, but you're not gonna see the antennas and the, and the radios hanging out there in the open. They are gonna be concealed within a, a canister, but it's gonna be more of a mesh canister than a solid canister. One of the reasons why they couldn't get 5G on, on the existing site is the antenna, the, the radios are enclosed in that canister, and they're overheating. So they weren't able to, they were able to get them up there, they just weren't able to keep them on because they were burning up. So what they'd like to do is replace this with what we call a DO pole. The new technology is DO macro, and this is a DO pole that would support the, the new equipment.
Okay. Anybody have any question?
Thank you.
Anybody else? Anybody else on the public hearing for a special use permit for the telecommunications tower? If not, we'll move on to our second public hearing. Consider a proposal amendment to Chapter 30, the Code and Ordnance of the City of Cape Girardeau regarding recreational vehicles. We've talked about that a little bit. Anybody here to make a comment? We've talked about that a little bit. Anybody here to make a comment on that ordinance? If not, we will move on. If you all don't care, if you want to go right to the new ordinances of the public hearings and do those now? Bill number 18-169, an ordinance granting a special use permit to Sprint Collective Solutions LLC in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri for purposes of constructing, maintaining, and operating a telecommunications tower at 1157 Southwest End Boulevard in the city and county of Cape Girardeau, Missouri.
Is that moved?
Motion made by Mr. Guard, seconded by Mr. Preston. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The second item, number 10, Bill number 18-170, is an ordinance amending Chapter 30 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Cape Girardeau, Missouri regarding recreational vehicles. Motion by Mr. Preston, seconded by Stacy. I had to look. You two, you got your heads down. Sometimes I can't tell who it is. Any, any further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion does carry. We'll now go back up to the... Any, any comments on any items listed on the agenda? Anybody here to make any comments on any item on the agenda this evening? Seeing none, we will move on to the consent agenda. Eric?
Bill number 18-152, an ordinance amending Chapter 30 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Cape Girardeau, Missouri by changing the zoning of property located on the southwest corner of Hopper Road and Old Hopper Road in the city and county of Cape Girardeau, Missouri from R1 to R3. An ordinance amending Chapter 30 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Cape Girardeau, Missouri by changing the zoning of property located on the southwest corner of Hopper Road and Old Hopper Road in the city and county of Cape Girardeau, Missouri from R1 to R3. Or 18-163, an ordinance appropriating funds for capital expenditures for parks and stormwater improvement projects from bond proceeds and from revenues of the capital portion of the parks and stormwater sales tax. An ordinance appropriating funds for capital expenditures for parks and stormwater improvement projects from bond proceeds and from revenues of the capital portion of the parks and stormwater sales tax. Or 18-164, an ordinance section 25-113 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Cape Girardeau, Missouri regarding administrative relief and exceptions. An ordinance amending section 25-113 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Cape Girardeau, Missouri regarding administrative relief and exceptions. Or 18-168, an ordinance proving record plat of Rhodes Mount Auburn subdivision amended. An ordinance proving record plat of Rhodes Mount Auburn subdivision amended.
You have before you the consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion to approve it. Motion made by Ryan. Do I hear a second?
Aye.
Seconded by Dan. Any discussion?
Mayor, please mark my votes for number two and number six, an exemption due to financial conflict of interest. I believe it's two and six.
No.
The four and...
I'm all myself.
Four and seven.
Sorry, I don't have a paper.
Four and seven.
Eric knew what I was indicating from. I do know.
He does know. Okay. No discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent agenda carries. New ordinances. We've already done nine and 10. We'll go to 11. Bill 18-171, an ordinance amending Chapter 15 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Cape Girardeau, Missouri regarding renewal period and reciprocity of trade licenses.
Is that moved?
Motion by Mr. Guard.
Seconded.
Seconded by Dan. Any discussion? I think this is just another great thing that our city's doing to make things easier for developers and for tradesmen as they come to our city to work.
Agreed.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 18-172, an ordinance accepting a permanent drainage easement for a 439 Optimus Drive from Billy Joe Bragg and Carol Ann Bragg in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri.
Is that moved?
Motion made by Mr. Guard, seconded by Stacy. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 18-173, an ordinance approving the record plat of Crowe subdivision.
Is that moved?
Motion by Dan. Do I hear a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Shelley. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 18-174, an ordinance amending Chapter 5 of the Code of Ordinances of Cape Girardeau, Missouri regarding liquor licenses. Motion by Stacy.
Seconded.
Seconded by Ryan. Any discussion?
I do. Just in case your question, you know, when I said you'd come up with cargo, I heard initially about the whole concept, and I thought, I mean, it's gone beyond in terms of what they're doing to make sure that underage drinking process. So we're putting forth an ordinance that we want to leave a lot of leeway for future businesses to do with it.
Well, the purpose of the ordinance is to have it there so that it does have some control over any other entity who would want to deliver alcohol.
Sure.
And that gives us that control. So if they're doing something that violates that, then we have a means to take away their license.
And maybe this is a different question, but the only question really in my mind is, in the process of some new business wanting to do this, deliver a liquor, is there any step in that normal process where, where there, there has to be an approval of their methods?
There has to be approval of the license.
Right, and I'm...
Right.
I'm a little ignorant about what...
No, you're, I mean, you, I think you make the, the right distinction in that we, in this, in this ordinance, we have not said the methods of how that, so, so that whether they have to take a picture of the ID or how they document that is not specifically spelled out. That was one thing that we did look at as, as doing that, and we talked with the existing business. And, I mean, you know, there were some good and badness to how to do that.
What I'm asking...
We started with the idea that you, you cannot sell to minors. How you, how you assure that doesn't happen and how you document that is, is up to you and your innovation and how you go about that. We could have been very specific about, about that, and we chose to go with the less, the less specific in our regulation and let them decide how to best do that. I don't know, Eric, is that a good description?
Right, but what I'm asking, what I'm asking is, in that process of this business obtaining that liquor license, is there any part of that where they need to show someone how they, how they plan to, to make sure that underage drinking...
The, as, as Ms. Meyer said, the, the method is not exactly prescribed, but...
Does it ever check, though?
Well, when there, the police department does compliance checks all the time on, on liquor establishments all through the city on a number of different issues, sales to minor and various sundry things. Yeah, I, I don't doubt that there will continue to be compliance checks of, of one kind or another. But the ordinance currently already prohibits distributing liquor if you're not old enough to be distributing it, if you are, if you're not old enough to be receiving it. The ordinances already require those things. And, but the police department on a routine basis does enforcement checks on, to see if those kinds of things are being complied with.
Sure, and it, and it seems much more straightforward in my mind if you're a restaurant or a bar or a grocery store or whatever, you know, somebody goes out to purchase something and they have to show their ID here, you know, it's slightly different. You've got the delivery to a home, is the, is the person there that really bought the alcohol?
Is your question, I mean, is it what teeth is in the ordinance to ensure that they're not delivering to minors?
I guess, or, or even if you don't want to put it in an ordinance, and I can see perhaps why, what, is there any process before they get that approval, before they get the liquor license, where the company has to put forth a plan to be approved in how they will deliver and ensure that? Is that already, is that even a point?
No, there isn't.
The answer is no, but...
No, there is not anything like that. And, and Stacy, there is, there is nothing like that for almost any other ordinance that the city has. Nobody has a plan of how fast they're going to be driving down Woodland Street. Nobody has a plan for how they're going to, to conduct their businesses. Nobody has a plan for all those kinds of things. But if there are violations...
Or how to not sell to a minor at the play game or wherever.
Yeah, they will, they will do checks if they, if they hear that there is an issue with some particular something. The, the police do compliance checks, enforcement's checks all the time, and there are state regulations as to how they do that. If they send somebody to, they have to make sure that they're the, they qualify with the law otherwise to be somebody that's underage trying to buy. Or, or there can be sting operations. And, and those things happen all the time. They don't make the newspapers, but they happen all the time. But a, in answer to your question, is there something that, before they would get their license, that would say, how are we going to comply with those compliance checks? No. But there isn't on the vast bulk of the city's ordinances either.
Well, and, and I guess you're just kind of talking about the next, the follow-up question. It's, is it worth, do, do you want to have some of that?
Well, I've always been one for less government regulation and I would rather see it be simple and not be complex, personally.
And if later dated becomes...
If later dated becomes an issue, that we could always come back and revisit that and change the ordinance and put more restrictions on it. If there are violations occurring, if another business starts up, cargo goes beyond what most would do by checking that ID, taking a picture of it, keeping a record of it, and, and so forth. If another business does not want to do that and then we find out there are violations, yeah, we can, number one, we can take their license away. But number two, we could go back and address it.
This is the same, the same way to get a liquor license, it was the same way in getting this license to where staff, you know, if someone, you know, a convicted felon comes in and tries to apply for a delivery license, you know, just like he would for, to open a bar, most likely going to be denied. So there, there is some teeth there for staff to be able to police it on the front end.
Well, that would just be, that, if that felon were starting...
Correct, or, or starting, right. But I also look at it, as, as the mayor said, you know, less government. If we look, we all looked at the two proposals as far as ordinances, and as far as less government, this is, to me, the right, the right decision compared to the, the other choice.
Okay, okay. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor of Bill number 18-174 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We do have several appointments this evening.
Golf course, it was 444 and 3, which I don't know if you want to have a discussion about it. Really tight.
It was a tight vote. We have appointments to the Golf Course Advisory Board, the Convention and Visitors Bureau Executive Board, appointment to the River Campus Board of Managers, appointment to the Show Me Center Board of Managers. Gosh, I've never seen a vote this close. The Golf Course Advisory Board ballot, there were... There was one incumbent, Jerry Grimm, who was reappointed. They also voted to Brad Wittenborn and Mark Matthews. They each had four votes and another person had three votes. And the other votes were dismersed among everybody else, but those are the three that were appointed. Need a motion? I need a motion to appoint those three persons to the Golf Course Advisory Board.
Who are they?
Jerry Grimm, Mark Matthews, and Brad Wittenborn. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Convention and Visitors Bureau Executive Board. Let me get them in the order. I don't have that one.
Convention and Visitors was, is by, is by title.
Oh, it's by title. That's Scott Meyer. I'll entertain a motion to appoint Scott Meyer back to the Convent, CBB Board. Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? You can talk about him right now if you want to.
Go right ahead.
If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. River Campus Board of Managers, again, it looks like Scott Meyer is reappointed to the River Campus Board of Managers. Do I entertain a motion to that effect?
Is that moved?
Motion by Shelley, seconded by Stacy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the last is appointed to the Show Me Center Board of Managers, and that would be Mr. Lincoln Scott. Moved by Shelley, seconded by Stacy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Those are done. Do we have any other business this evening? Not that I know of. If not, I'll entertain a motion. We adjourn, and we do need to have a closed session tonight.
Is that moved?
Motion made to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We need to have a closed session to discuss legal actions and litigation, confidence communications with legal counsel pursuant to RS Missouri Section 610-021. So we will need to vote, we need to vote to go to closed session.
Is that moved?
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We will adjourn to closed session.
I don't know whether, I don't know whether Jerry was, didn't want to be on it again or what. Oh, good to see you. I like your hat. Cold out there. Yeah. Yeah, you're not used to that cold.